September seventeenth, two thousand nineteen, one o'clock, a regular city commission meeting. Madam Clerk, do we have a quorum?
Yes, Mayor.
Commissioner Sessna will lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please bow your heads. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for this day that you have given us. Help safeguard the first responders that serve to protect and guide and help keep the peace in our community. Please watch over us and guide us with your wisdom during our meeting and help us as leaders to move our community forward in a positive direction. In this we pray, amen.
Amen. Okay, the, any corrections or additions to the minutes of the September third and also the special meeting on September tenth meeting?
Just on the third meeting, record the motion and the vote on the appropriation ordinance. Other than that, everything else looked fine.
Okay. It has stand approved as revised. At this time, we have public comment and we've set aside thirty minutes if we need it for anyone in the audience that would like to address the city commission. We ask that you come before the podium and state your name. Is there anyone here that's not on the agenda that wants to speak? Okay, thank you. Moving on.
Item six A, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a request to allow the mayor to proclaim September twenty eighth, two thousand nineteen, as Garden City Community College Day in Garden City.
Mayor, I make the motion to approve the proclamation as presented.
Second. And moved in second that we approve the proclamation for the Garden City Community College. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Mayor, if you'd want to invite representatives from the college down to join you, I can read the proclamation while you're cutting down there. Is that okay?
Yeah, that's good.
I've got one up here.
It is a long.
It is a long. You've got, you've got a couple of them today. Whereas Garden City Junior College, as it was known at the time, was voted into existence by countywide election on April one, nineteen nineteen, and held its first classes on September one, nineteen nineteen, with one vocational and five academic departments and opened with a cohort of twenty-two freshmen and one sophomore. And whereas GCJC began as a part of the Garden City Public School System and shared facilities with Garden City High School in Sabine and Colcombe's Halls in the one hundred block of Buffalo Jones Avenue. And GCJC graduated its first student, a transfer student named Mildred Hope, in nineteen twenty. And whereas the Bronkbuster was adopted as a mascot in nineteen thirty-nine, the Kansas Legislature passed the Community College Act in nineteen sixty-five, authorizing the establishment of twenty-two independent colleges, including Garden City Community Col-, Garden City Community Junior College, as it became known, and authorized the institution to levy taxes, conduct its own programs, and function independently. And function independently of the local K through twelve system. And whereas county voters elected the first Board of Trustees in nineteen sixty-five, and Elsie Crouch served as the college's first president from nineteen sixty-five to nineteen seventy-one. And whereas the campus's current location on Campus Drive opened in nineteen sixty-nine, the same year as its fiftieth anniversary. Who wrote this? James Michener? Wow. And whereas Garden City Community College, they have done a lot in all of these, in these one hundred years. We're gonna read it all. Whereas Garden City Community College exists today to produce positive contributions to the economic and social well-being of society. And whereas GCCC is part of a cohort, cohort of nineteen community colleges across Kansas with a shared mission to educate students and improve their respective communities. And whereas GCCC is celebrating its centennial year, one hundred years of community and tradition, with a host of events between the dates of September twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth two thousand nineteen, including a centennial gala, a community parade, family-friendly adventure scavenger hunt, free food and entertainment in the quad, and a pep band rally prior to the old timers homecoming football game at three P. M. And whereas in GCC's centennial year, we recognize and celebrate our continued efforts to help students develop essential skills, advance toward degrees, prepare for job and career success, and enrich lives through participation and learning, all while serving as a powerful engine for local workforce and economic development. And now, therefore, I, Dan Thankhauser, Mayor, the City of Garden City, do hereby deem it an honor and pleasure to proclaim September twenty-eighth, two thousand nineteen, as Garden City Community College Day in Garden City, Kansas. And I urge all citizens to give full regard to the past and continuing tradition of education at GCCC and also encourage residents to join the students, staff, and college stakeholders for the centennial celebration planned on this date. Sign and seal the seventeenth day of September, two thousand nineteen.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Do you have to read that at the centennial?
No.
Thank you, guys.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Item six B, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a request from Family Crisis Services and Steve Dyer to allow the mayor to proclaim the month of October, two thousand nineteen, as Domestic Violence Awareness and Prevention Month in Garden City, Kansas.
I make the motion, we approve the proclamation as presented.
Second. It's been moved in second that we approve the proclamation for Domestic Violence Awareness Prevention Month. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carried. Is anybody here? This? Okay.
Moving on. Item six C, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a request from Eric Siena-Tampo on behalf of the Appliance and Furniture Mark for a waiver to the parking requirements and temporary structure requirements to allow for a tent from September eighteenth through October sixth at eleven seventeen Fleming Street to hold a tent and sidewalk sale. And this request is consistent with requests that have been made in the past.
I make the motion, we approve the waiver to the parking requirements as presented.
I'll second. It's been moved in second that we approve the request from the Appliance Furniture Mark. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carried.
Item D, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a request authorizing the signs be located in City Right of Way on Kansas Avenue for the Peddlers Market from October twenty-first through the twenty-seventh. The, this request is similar to a request that's been submitted and approved by the governing body in the past. And I think you've got a little bit of background information in there.
I may make a motion that we approve the request as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved in second that we approve the request for the Peddlers Market, October twenty-first through the twenty-seventh, two thousand nineteen. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carried.
Item seven A, Assistant City Manager Jennifer Cunningham will be honored by the International City County Management Association as the recipient of the organization's Assistant Excellence and Leadership Award in memory of Buford M. Watson, Jr. This award is, in the, in the grand scheme of ICMA, is a relatively new award, probably, I think, in less than its thirtieth, thirtieth year. But ICMA is, is an organization that's been around for a hundred years, has an annual awards program, but doesn't have a long list of awards that it gives out. So this is certainly a very prestigious honor, and we're proud of Jennifer.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
She probably needs to make a big speech on that, doesn't she? She could practice her speech before she goes.
And I think, Jake, did you want to give us a big speech? Item seven B, recently appointed Neighborhood and Development Services Director Carol Davidson will begin her duties on September twenty-third. The City of Garden City, the City of Holcomb, and Fannie County, and interim director Sam Curran are all excited to welcome Carol. We appreciate Sam's work during the interim period for sure, and all of the Neighborhood and Development Services staff. Everybody's stepped up real well to make sure that the building community didn't, didn't need to be unnecessarily slowed down while we made a staffing, staffing appointment. Seven C through seven K are mostly presentation of monthly staff reports, with the exception of D, which is an update on the Cox Communications cable television lineup.
I did have one question on the police department report, and as I'm trying to scan through here, I'll just go from memories. I'm not quite down through the memo yet.
Is that the activity report or the organizational study action?
The activity reports. It's on the, on the report of the city manager.
Gotcha.
And it's just in regard to traffic citations. I was looking at the year-to-date and noticed we were quite a bit down. I'll get the, as I get to this part of the memo, the numbers for you, Chief, but the traffic citations are way down, and I noticed that accidents are up a little bit, and I know that there's fluctuation. But I just, I wanted to ask about, has there been patrol changes or anything that might account for those citation differences, or are people actually just doing a better job obeying the laws and the, the traffic?
I wish it was the latter. I really wish it was the latter. A lot of it has to do with the number of openings and vacancies that we had.
Okay.
And the number of officers that are at the academy and/or currently in training. I just, with the school year starting again, I made an emphasis for, emphasis for increased patrol activity and enforcement in our school zones. So we're making some inroads in that area as well.
Okay.
So, a lot of it has to do with the openings, but and the, the number of officers that are in training.
Okay. Well, thank you.
I also wanted to say, Chief, thank you for the organizational study action plan. The way that's being done and filled, that is really, I mean, there was a lot to do, and you can see you've really made a lot of inroads. And so I just appreciate the update, and also just the way the police department is really working to not only improve itself, but also improve our community. So, thank you.
Thank you.
It's a busy time of year in this community, certainly a lot of activities, many of them request your presence. If you can get with C. Lynn on any of those that you plan on attending, that would be, that would be great. Item nine A, is the appropriation ordinance. If approved, it would be ordinance number twenty-four ninety-one dash two thousand nineteen A.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve appropriation ordinance number two-four ninety-one dash two oh one nine A.
Second. It's been moved in second that we approve the appropriation ordinance twenty-four ninety-one dash twenty nineteen A. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carried.
Thank you. Item ten A, the governing body is asked to consider and approve the standard traffic ordinance for two thousand nineteen. If approved, it would be ordinance number twenty-eight forty-four dash two thousand nineteen. James?
Thank you, Matt. Mayor Commissioners, good afternoon. Today, we have the item of the standard traffic ordinance as explained in the memo. This is the uniform body of ordinance that we adopt every year. This year, there's been some substantial changes, mainly to have it reflect the Kansas Uniform Traffic Code, and same with the UPOC, the Kansas Criminal Code. So a lot of what you see is just getting definitions to match what's in the state statutes, or getting, having some of ordinances that we hadn't had in the past that do exist under state statute added to that body of code. And since some of them, we didn't, after consulting with the police department, we did not adopt or propose to be adopted. That would, one of them would be driving in canyons. Obviously, that doesn't apply for our geography. And one thing that I thought was a change of notes would be the failure to comply with the traffic citation. A municipal judge does now have the ability to waive any reinstatement fees. We work with quite a few people who are trying to fix their licenses that have been suspended. Sometimes those reinstatement fees do provide a substantial hurdle, so at least they can petition the court to, to look at that and to see if those can be waived.
Are they made aware that that's an option to, to be able to waive that?
I don't believe so.
So they'd have to have someone that knows to do that?
Correct.
Okay.
I make a motion, we approve ordinance twenty-eight forty-four dash twenty nineteen. Second.
It's been moved in second that we approve ordinance twenty-eight forty-four dash two thousand nineteen. Any further discussion? All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carried.
Item B, the governing body is asked to consider and approve the Uniform Public Offense Code for two thousand nineteen. James?
Thank you, Matt. Hello again. Mayor Commissioners, at Saint, the same situation, this is the yearly update, and there is a lot of additions, and again, that is to get the UPOC and our local code in line with the state statutes. A lot of the changes deal with possession of controlled substances. These have already been laws that are on the books that the police have enforced, that those would have just went to district court. Now they can go to municipal court, but nothing in the law changes, it's just us adopting those. Does anybody have any questions over anything that's in the UPOC?
I make a motion, we approve ordinance twenty-eight forty-five dash twenty nineteen.
Second. It's been moved in second that we approve ordinance twenty-eight forty-five dash two thousand nineteen. Any further discussion? All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carried.
Item ten C, the governing body is asked to consider and approve amendments and additions to section sixty-two dash seventeen, use or possession of marijuana and tetrahydrocannabin- you know, THC prohibited. If approved, it would be ordinance number twenty-eight forty-six dash two thousand nineteen. James?
Thank you, Matt. This ordinance is also updated to reflect updates to the state statute. As described in my memo, there is a defense, an affirmative defense available for people who are using the cannabidiol treatment preparations, and that's further defined by the ordinance as well. And one of the updates as well that we had was the definition of marijuana being updated to reflect the current definition under state statute.
I do appreciate that it's within, that has to be physician license to practice in Kansas, because we do border states that have approved marijuana. So I do, did appreciate that that was a clarification there, that it is a Kansas physician that they have to have, that they have to have the prescription from, so.
Yes, and then I believe that the letter from that physician as well has to be on, on the physician's letterhead.
Yep.
Amongst a few other requirements.
I make a motion, we approve ordinance twenty-eight forty-six dash twenty nineteen.
I second.
It's been moved in second that we approve ordinance twenty-eight forty-six dash two thousand nineteen. Any further discussion? All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carried.
Item ten D, the governing body is asked to consider and approve amendments and additions to section sixty-two dash sixteen, possession of drug paraphernalia. If approved, this would be ordinance number twenty-eight forty-seven dash two thousand nineteen.
Hi, James.
Hello again. Commissioners, this also was updated to coincide with state statute language. It had to be modified a bit because of changes in classifications of crime. As you can see in the proposed ordinance, there are essentially three sections, and I believe two of them are Class A offenses, which means there's anywhere up to one year in jail possible, and one of them is a Class B. This new for the proposed ordinance is the pseudoephedrine and ephedrine basis, and that's described in the language as well. You cannot have any compound, you cannot obtain any compounds at retail that would contain more than three point six grams of, of that base. The, and the other language that has changed would be to remove, a lot of the language that was in there would, now with the changes, apply to felony offenses, and so we removed all of that language. That way, there's no question that it's talking about what would be on the state's side misdemeanors.
Yeah, I move that we approve ordinance twenty-eight forty-seven dash twenty nineteen.
There's a second? Second. It's been moved in second that we approve ordinance twenty-eight forty-seven dash two thousand nineteen. Any further discussion? All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Ten E, the governing body is asked to consider and approve amendments to chapter eighteen of the Code of Ordinances pertaining to building codes. If approved, this would be ordinance number twenty-eight forty-eight dash two thousand nineteen. Melissa?
Hi, Mayor Commissioners. The governing body is asked to consider and approve amendments to chapter eighteen of the Code of Ordinances pertaining to the building codes. Neighborhood and Development Services staff at the request of the Southwest Kansas Builders' Association has been requested to review Garden City's building codes adopted and contained in chapter eighteen of the Code of Ordinances. Staff began this process in early twenty seventeen with discussions with the Home Builders' Association and the chief building inspector, in which he met and discussed updating the code with builders one-on-one. In early twenty eighteen, staff worked through a consultant, Trent Maxwell, to review the major changes to the International Code Council series from the adopted two thousand nine to the two thousand twelve, two thousand fifteen, and twenty eighteen series. The state fire marshal is in the process of updating the state fire codes to the twenty eighteen series. This is the same process the Garden City Fire, sorry, same process the Garden City Fire Department is conducting. If adopted, this will be the first time in over twenty years that we would have consistency with all of our construction-related life safety codes. Due to the significant amount of material reviewing the differences in four ICC code cycles, it has taken a significant amount of time to review the major changes. In May of twenty eighteen, notices were sent to all currently licensed contractors and design professionals requesting volunteers to serve on committees for each major code section or group as follows: mechanical, electrical, plumbing, residential, construction, commercial construction, and design professionals. We accepted all volunteers and had a minimum of four participants in each category attend several review meetings. In these meetings, we sought consensus on the changes to the codes, local amendments, and chapter eighteen to the Code of Ordinances. Staff has reviewed and prepared the consensus amendments and updates to the Code of Ordinances and presented them to the Building Safety Board of Appeals for consideration and a recommendation for the governing body. The Board of Safety Appeals reviewed the proposed changes suggested by the Home Builders' Association, local builders, contractors, and design professionals. The Board of Safety Appeals then made further revisions to chapter eighteen. Over three meetings, the Board of Safety Appeals recommended the governing body approve the proposed changes to the chapter eighteen of the Code of Ordinances. At the final meeting of the Board of Safety Appeals held on July twenty-third, two thousand nineteen, they recommended to the governing body approval of chapter eighteen of the Code of Ordinances with changes that may be made by legal counsel. The list below highlights the major revisions made to chapter eighteen of the Code of Ordinances. Article one, we increased the permit fees regarding work without permit. Documentation, upgrading the minimum grade elevation curb and gutter requirements, hard alley requirements, and et cetera. Amended the abandoned sewers and sewer disposal facilities. Under article two building codes, we deleted the following sections: fees refunded, energy, Department of Building Safety, annual permit and annual permit records, work exempt from permit and their following subsections one, two, five, eight, nine, ten, and twelve, re-ruffing of built-up roofs, concrete and monodinary foundations, duct testing, sewer depth, metallic tubing, copper, and copper alloy tubing, and individual outside appliances. Amended the tables for climatic and geographic design criteria and the licensing for approved contractors to do building demolition. Article three, electrical code, adopted, adoption of the NFPA seventy, National Code, National Electric Code twenty seventeen, deleted the following section, fees refunded, amended the readily accessible location for service disconnects. Article four, mechanical code, adoption of the International Mechanical Code twenty eighteen, deleted the following section, fees refunded. Article five, under the plumbing code, adopted, adoption of the International Plumbing Code twenty eighteen, deleted the sections, fees refunded, building sewer pipe insert and sewer depth. Amended the following sections, grease and septic door and small occupancies, drinking fountains. Article six, fuel gas code, adoption of the International Fuel Gas Code twenty eighteen, deleted the following section, fee refunds, amended definitions, installation and construction requirements. Under article nine, building trades and contractors, deleted the following contractor license requirements: Class D, SI sign installation; Class DC, carpentry; Class D, name of license, commercial; and Class L, limited contractor. Article thirteen of the Housing Code, adoption of International Property Maintenance Code, and deleted the fee refund section. We did attach a copy of the final chapter of Code of Eighteen of Ordinances, twenty eighteen ICC series, and the twenty seventeen NFPA seventy electrical code. However, once that went to get published, we found that, one of the Board of Safety Appeals members found that through the revisions of the draft submitted to legal, a section did not get included, and so we have submitted in its entirety again the ordinance, as well as the highlight, there should be a single page with a highlight of the language that we amended, to reflect the correct language that was approved by the Board of Safety Appeals at that July twenty-third meeting. The alternatives before the governing body are, they may approve the proposed amendments to chapter eighteen of the Code of Ordinances, they may approve the proposed amendments to chapter eighteen of the Code of Ordinances with changes, the governing body may deny the proposed amendments to chapter eighteen of the Code of Ordinances, or you may defer action to a later date. Staff recommends alternative one. The governing body approved the proposed amendments to chapter eighteen of the Code of Ordinances. As a fiscal note, should you approve the proposed amendments to chapter eighteen, this will incur a cost to the departmental budget, requires the purchasing of three new sets of codebooks for education and training of our building inspection staff. The price of each set of codebooks is budgeted as seven hundred dollars, for a total of, the three sets would be twenty-one hundred dollars, which is included in our twenty nineteen and twenty twenty budget. All right.
When would this become effective? It's gotta be published in the telegram, what, two weeks?
It should become effective at the first of the year, is that correct, Jimmy?
So, so it's on and after October first.
Okay.
And the version you have, I think we got this ready for the October first meeting, so the date will be changed on the last page to approval today.
Yeah.
But publication in an October first. If, if you would, if the discussion is that you would want a different effective date, we could certainly could do that. I don't know what the discussion was at the, the committee level, Melissa.
So as far as, as contractors, Melissa, so I know that I got a chance to meet with you, but as far as contractors, so will they be notified of the significant changes? Or, because I know that you're gonna educate, you're building inspector, will there be some educating, educational sessions for contractors, or?
Yes, we'll propose, we'll put a letter when they do the renewing of the contractor's licensing, we'll put a letter in there notifying all the licensed contractors that we have switched codes, as well as we'll have other materials to notify the general public that we have adopted the new codes if you should approve them today.
The other thing was, there was a discussion that we would accept the two thousand nine or the two thousand eighteen for a six-month period. Is that still?
That definitely could be a possibility. That would have been in effect in the July, if the codes had been adopted in July. We could definitely do a three-month period through the end of this year to accept either code, up through January of twenty twenty, then have the new code go into effect.
Yeah, I, I don't know.
We were also thinking that anything that started in between, I'm sorry, anything that started in between would carry, would carry over past January first, some like bigger projects or construction that started November or December of this year, and then we were looking to completely be done with two thousand nine roughly by March first.
to accept either code up through January of 2020, then have the new code go into effect.
Yeah, I, I don't know.
We were also thinking that anything that started in between, I'm sorry, anything that started in between would would carry over past January 1st. Some like bigger projects or construction that started November or December of this year. And then we were looking to completely be done with 2009 roughly by March 1st.
So that would, in other words, if you come in December 1st for a building permit, you could have either or?
Yes, as, as the way we had talked about it, yes. We would try to persuade them to go to the 18, but the 18 wouldn't go in effect till 2020, January 1st.
So that would give you that six month?
Yes.
Yeah, I appreciate the six month, yeah. I appreciate.
What, how, I guess that could be taken care of in a letter to all the licensed people?
Yes.
Through home builders association meetings, things like that, we can definitely get the word out, make it, make it known for everybody. And we've kind of been doing that in, in the past, trying to get them ready for that to start with.
When we went through this and looked at it, I mean, there are some things in the 2018 code that are less restrictive than the 2009 code.
Yes.
A few things, yeah, which I thought was strange, but anyway, that's either here and there. So, any other questions from commissioners? Not a, except a motion for ordinance 2848?
I'll make the motion, we approve ordinance 2848-2019.
There's a second, second. It's been moved and seconded that we approve ordinance 2848-2019.
Now that's with that six month, does that need to be in there, or does that with that six month that that's understood, or?
I think it should be stated probably.
Yeah, I, I.
Part of the motion?
Should be part of the motion, but again, do you want the, the new ordinance to go into effect January 1, 2020?
Well, if you did August, if you did October 1st and you had until March, that would be your six-month window. And if, that would kind of meet your timeframe of trying to finish up everything in March. So it makes sense to do the October, but if not, then maybe still, but then you'd have six months and that'd be June, so.
What do you want to?
For clarity, it seems like it needs to be, the effective date needs to be in March then.
No.
No, I mean.
Think of March, January 1.
Right.
Yeah, that's what you're saying.
Well.
I believe that the effective date of following the adoption of the ordinance is appropriate. Administratively, I think what you hear your staff saying is they're going to review plans according to both codes. But if we don't have an effective date until January 1 or March 1 of 2020, we wouldn't be able to review plans according to the new, the new code.
So I think the October 1st works, and then with the March, which the March 1st being the cutoff, so.
I would agree. And the, yeah, if, if, if the commission would prefer to define the length of time with which the staff administratively accepts both codes or continuing to administer the, the outgoing code for projects already started. Doing that through the, through the motion at least gets that on record in the minutes.
I'd rather it be on record so that way that it's, it's written down and everyone knows, so.
So, you want to restate the motion?
So we're going to have it start at October 1st for a six-month period, okay. I'm, I make a motion, we approve ordinance 2848-2019, starting October 1st of 2019, and extended for a six-month period, grace period? Or period, grace period?
March?
Until March.
March 1, 2020.
Second.
Five months. October, November, December.
Is that your six months?
It's five months.
March 31st.
Be March 31st would be your six.
Yeah, six months would be.
So March?
March 31st.
So, March 31st of 2020.
Okay, is there?
Still second.
Second? Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve ordinance 2848-2019 in reference to the new IBC 2018 building code to go into effect October 1st, 2019 through March 31st, 2020. Anytime in that period, you could use either code. Any further discussion? All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carried.
Item 10F, the governing body is asked to consider and approve an ordinance regulating the and amending fire prevention and protection services, 46-31 and 46-32 of the code of ordinances of the city repealing existing code sections 4631 and 4632, all to the code of ordinances of the city of Garden City, Kansas. If approved, this would be ordinance number 2849-2019. Chief?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. Garden City Fire Department has been operating under the 2003 Fire Code for quite a few years, when it was adopted back in the early 2000s. And when the state of Kansas Fire Marshal's office went to the 2006 code, we had to move forward with their code because we could not be on the same different cycle as they are. We had to be on the same cycle with them. By moving to the 2018 codes, we set precedence for doing quite a few new things. Number one, we are able to now interpret and enforce codes on the same code cycle as the city building department. We are able to allow the new code to take effect to allow us to be able to handle more of the new things that are happening in our community where the 2006 code would not have applied. So, we are asking the governing body to approve the ordinance to change from the 2006 Fire Code to the 2018 Fire Code with just a few amendments, which I will touch base on right now. We are looking to adopt only a certain few appendancy, appendices. With paragraph B, we are omitting A, E, F, G, J, K, L, M, and N, which don't apply to anything that we are doing here within the city of Garden City. The violation penalties pretty much stayed the same on the amendment. On fire and evacuation drills, section 405.2, we are changing to comply with KSA 31133 for the fire drills statewide in the school systems where they have four fire drills a year and then four crisis drills, and then the tornado drills. So we want to be in compliance with the state statute. 503.3, we are adding a little beef to the fire lane requirements that are in the code. The code is very vague on specifics on fire lane requirements. So we are setting forth some more language to be able to address the fire lane requirements on commercial buildings. Address and identification, again, 505.1, we are lacking in far, as far as the fire code as to what addressing numbers, how big the numbers are. The code specifically states on commercial buildings, four-inch letters. As we know, some of our commercial buildings over on LaRue are set back way off from the road. So we decided to beef up the language too, to address at different intervals in feet, how big those numbers have to be so we can view them from the road. Key boxes on 506.1, there was again, some vagueness in the code, in the 2018, 2018 code. So what we've done is we have made it known that any new or existing building with a fire alarm or sprinkler system or fire suppression system would be required to have a Knox box for us to be able to enter the building to check on these fire suppression issues and be able to handle them appropriately. On 903-29, Group S1, there was a change in the automatic sprinkler system is required for Group S1 occupancies, which are storage occupancies. We noted on item number 6 that a new Group S1 self-storage facility that exceeds 25,000, or 2,500 square foot would be required to be fully sprinkled. And the reason for that is we had a couple of fires here recently where we lost a storage building on the east end of town out in the county. And we wound up losing probably six or seven, eight units out of that building due to that fire. Number 10110351 on Group A2, and then 110353 on Group I2. The code would have specifically told us that we would have had to retroactively tell any business that has 300 or more occupants, such as the Elks or the Knights of Columbus, that they would have had to put a fire sprinkler system in at the time of adoption of this code. I did not want to do that with any of our existing businesses. So what I decided to do is if they do a 50% remodel of that building anytime in the future, at the time of that 50% remodel, they will add sprinklers in at that time. Section 506, 560822, use of pyrotechnics before approximate audience. The code does allow for pyrotechnics to be used in an indoor setting. However, I felt that use of indoor pyrotechnics inside a building is not a good thing. So we amended that in the code to make sure that we don't have any kind of fireworks inside buildings. Location of storage tanks where they're prohibited follows the rules of KSA 31-133. Same thing with above-ground storage tanks where they're prohibited. And then the maximum capacity of propane cylinders for commercial and residential storage is listed in section 601, 6104-dash-two. So what I would like to ask the governing body is to approve us going to the 2018 code. And we will retro the same effective date as the city does with the building department for plan review, taking the effective date of the end of March.
I got a question on, you said S1, 2,500 square feet?
Yes.
For us, I mean, that's a pretty small storage building.
The pre, the previous, the Group S1 storage occupancy, if you look at paragraph 5, used for the storage of upholstered furniture or mattresses that exceed 2,500 square feet. So that would be like a furniture store. But with the self-storage facilities, new self-storage facilities that would go in, we don't know what's in these buildings. People store furniture, they store, they store chemicals, they store all kinds of hazards that we are unknown to in these buildings because we don't technically inspect them. So we wanted to have a little bit of, of beef to be able to suppress a fire. The other option would be on that line, and we could amend it through the city council's office, is to either sprinkler the building or at least fire, fire block the building every 500 square feet. So that way there's no travel of fire between units.
That'd make more sense, I think, for most, most developers to put in a fire block between every 2,500 or?
Maybe every, well, if it's a 2,500 square foot building, every 500 square feet.
Yeah. And then, as far as 50% remodel, is that 50% of the total building?
Yes, 50% of the total building.
Total building.
Yeah, not just one little area.
Right, okay.
Sprinkler systems are significantly, the, the cost and.
It's, I mean, it's four to $5 a square foot, that's what it is.
So I think 50% makes sense, so that's a major remodel.
Yeah, somehow we've got to get all this information out to architects and engineers.
Correct, correct. I will be making my contacts to the architects and engineers through my office to make sure that they are aware of what the changes are going to be. And then speaking with the business owners as we proceed forward with our inspections, I will also be instructing the on-duty crews as they go out and do their monthly inspections that we will be proceeding on with the new code as of the end of March 2020. So that way we've got a little bit of a time I can get them trained on the code and, and make sure that their inspection forms meet the new code requirement.
I think the collaboration and cooperation with the, the building departments, that's going to be key and very essential with all these changes.
Absolutely.
Mayor, I'd make a motion to approve ordinance number 2849-2019.
There's a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve ordinance 2849-2019. Is this going to follow the same?
I think we need to.
Is the building code as far as dates?
With the start of the, yeah, with the start of October.
Yeah, I would like to mimic what they're doing and, and start the 1st of October and then end, the end of March.
I agree with that amendment to my motion.
Okay, okay, so the amended motion is that we will start on October 1st, 2019, and between there and the 31st of March, 2020. Okay, you can use either, either or.
Either code.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carried.
Thank you.
Item G, the governing body is asked to consider and approve compensation for members of the governing body. Approved, this would be ordinance 2850-2019. Jared?
Mayor and Commissioners, compensation for the governing body has not changed since 2006. The 2020 approved budget has included an increase in the personnel line item of the city commission budget. This is about the third week we've kind of talked about this. Going back to August 6, the commission meeting August 6, the governing body discussed the topic of compensation increases. After discussion, the governing body concluded that they would need more information to make a decision and they would feel, that they would feel would be fair for them and the taxpayers. So city staff reached out to all cities of the first class. The information I gathered was reviewed on September 3rd and is attached again to this agenda. On September 3rd, you know, you ve, you reviewed the information and after discussion, the governing body agreed to push the formal vote of the compensation increase to today's meeting, the attached ordinance, which would become effective January 1, 2020. If approved, is reflective of the discussions that occurred during the September 3rd, 2019 city commission meeting. The attached ordinance proposes an annual compensation increase to $10,000 for the mayor and the remaining members of the city commission will remain at $5,200. In addition to the increase in the mayoral compensation, beginning in 2021, the governing body will receive a yearly raise equal to the salary pool increase that city employees receive. Your alternatives, adopt the ordinance as presented, choose a pay increase other than what has been presented, make no changes, staff has no recommendation. And again, the compensation has been included in the personnel line item for the city commission.
Thanks for your, your work and also the finding all the information. I move that we adopt the ordinance as presented.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve ordinance 2850-2019 concerning compensation for the governing body. Any further discussion?
I just have a. I understand where we're at on this, and there's only two people that have been mayor on this commission in this body right now. The current item before us that we voted on and approved at the last meeting, where it creates, it will create an inequity between the mayor and the rest of the commissioners. It's going to create perceived higher expectation for the mayor and compared to the rest of the commission. The proposed stipend for the mayor and the other commissioners could possibly create an issue in the future. That's all I've got to say.
My, I'll throw my two cents.
Is there something that you could, like, that equal?
I think.
That was my comment. I know there's a motion and a second on it, and.
But we're in this discussion.
I understand that.
I think, personally, I think there's, it's too much difference between the mayor and the commissioners, but. It's not going to affect me much, but, but, because it doesn't go into effect at first, but. Personally, I would think eight, eight would be the number for the mayor, but that's just my personal opinion, so. Anybody else want to comment?
I just, I, I don't, I guess, certainly I've not been mayor and I don't, certainly I'm not as familiar with the, the additional duties of the job, but it, what I, what I see, I do think that it does require more time, more, and more attendance at events, those kind of things that are requested. And so I do think that there's an appropriate increase there. But I, I guess I don't understand what the, the problem and the differential, I guess we could speak more specific of that, I don't. I mean, I think we could talk about the degrees and whether we, we think that the degree of the compensation is appropriate for the, the difference in the expectation, but I guess I don't understand the conflict that it sets up either.
It creates an inequity between the mayor and the commission. Currently, there's a slight, there's a slight increase for the mayor and his duties compared to the rest of the commission. What we have before us creates a lar, larger compensation package. What we have before us creates a lar- larger compensation package for the mayor, which will create an inequity and a higher expectation for the mayor to perform than the rest of the commission. As we sit on this commission, we're all, we're all commissioners, the mayor runs the meeting, the mayor is a figurehead. Yes, the mayor does do a few other things, but there will be, it will create an equity for future commissions in approving this, where the mayor will be requesting other commissioners to do, to fill in, and I see this creating, creating a circumstance where there will be commissioners asking or looking at the mayor to, to create, well, it'll create a higher expectation for the mayor to perform his duties with the compensation packages as it stands right now. That's, that's all I'm saying.
I didn't realize there was, I didn't realize there was a difference between the two currently, so I guess I didn't, what's, do you know what the difference is, and maybe we could keep.
Currently, it's fifty-two hundred for commissioners and six thousand for the mayor.
Oh, good.
And the discussion at the last meeting was, well, that may not be enough to fully compensate the mayor for the duties as expected, but Commissioner Cessna's bringing up another point, too, that's valid.
We've had it since two thousand six to currently, and there hasn't been an issue. I'm just bringing up that I could see it creating, I could see it possibly creating an issue in the future for future commissions.
What would you suggest? Mayor, I mean.
Mayor.
Former mayor.
Future mayor.
Well, I mean, if, if it's kind of the consensus of the commission to, to raise the, the pay of the mayor, I could see where, you know, one of the alternatives at the last was to raise the compensation to nine thousand for the mayor and seventy-eight hundred for the commissioners. I could see that, I mean, that was kind of.
With the increase going, with the increase.
Two percent.
Two percent, or whatever the increase is.
Whatever the increase, I could see that, but, but there's, when you're having that high of an increase for, for one position and keeping everybody else the same, I can see future commissions, that could create an issue.
No, I appreciate those comments.
Well, we don't have to. We can postpone it.
Well, there is, there is a motion, a second on the floor, and we will have to vote for that. That was just my concerns on it, and we can, there is a motion.
I think Corinther Dick suggested the ten, so.
Yeah, and that was because of the extra duties that currently we have, but I do see your point of if there is a, at this point, almost double pay for a mayor, there would be this thing, well, well, I'm not going to go fill in for you because you're getting paid to do that. I mean, I do see that. At the same time, the amount of money we're talking about isn't a lot of money, and it could be for some, but.
But we're not, well, I understand we have to compensate our elected officials to the level, to make it a level playing field for everybody, open it up, because there are people that are serving that, you know, have to take time off. I understand that.
Right.
But I can see it becomes an inequity with such the higher pay for the mayor coming back and saying, that's your job responsibility because of the higher compensation you're getting. I just don't want that as, I want to see it as a kind of a level playing field. I understand the mayor does a lot more. It's true, the mayor has a lot more responsibilities, but I can see if we pass this, there will become a, an issue where, like you said, well, you're getting paid that higher amount, that's your job. Because at times, the mayor is away and needs to have other commissioners, like the vice mayor, or if the vice mayor can't do it, one of the other commissioners to fill in. So I'm, I'm just, that's just my say.
Yeah, I appreciate the discussion, and I would support your, some of your consensus with the nine and the seventy-eight hundred, so I.
I don't know if I agree with that. I, I mean, I can, I can appreciate, we can, we can.
Debate the figures.
Debate the, the differential, but when we look at the comparisons across other cities, I think it's hard for us to justify raising, our commission paid two thousand dollars more than peer cities like Dodd City, which is about the same. So I, I mean, I see your point, Commissioner Cessna, I think we can debate whether or not that ten thousand is too high for the mayor. I don't know that I would be in favor of drastically increasing the base on the rest of the commissioners, but that's, again, my two cents. I, I feel more, I, I agree, we don't want the commission in ten years having the same, you know, talk, we need to have some sort of built-in standard increase. I think it's equitable and fair to do it along with the salary pool raises, but to do just a huge jump in compensation at this juncture, I don't know that I can support that.
Well, that was one of the original proposals, was just that, installing that base rate increase every year.
To whatever the pool is, it's, is that right, Mr. Allen? Two percent's been.
Historically, the salary pool's been two percent, but I think the tie in the wording is just to, it would be an amount equal to whatever was approved in the annual budget for the salary pool. That line item in the general fund, City Commission Department budget would change just like it does for the other departments.
Call a question.
Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, which is ordinance twenty-eight fifty dash two thousand nineteen, compensation of the governing body, all those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Three nays.
Yeah, I move that we approve an eight thousand dollar salary for the mayor, fifty-two hundred dollar with the two percent or the match with the City Commission, or with the city's salary pool.
Okay, is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded that we change the ordinance, right? Twenty-eight fifty?
Right.
Two thousand nineteen, mayor would be eight thousand per year, the balance of commission would be fifty-two hundred plus whatever the salary pool increase is per year. Any further discussion on that motion? All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carried. Eight fifty-two, thank you. We are at.
H.
H.
The governing body is asked to consider and approve a resolution making certain findings and determinations as to the need for housing within the city and setting forth the legal description of real property proposed to be designated as RHIDs within the city. If approved, it would be resolution number twenty-eight, twenty-four dash two thousand nineteen. Melissa?
Hey, Mayor and Commissioners, we bring before you properties that would like to be approved by the state for the RHID program. The state of Kansas passed a statute that allows cities of certain populations within counties of a certain population, such as ours, to offer incentives for affordable housing. Garden City meets the qualifications required by the state and is able to establish its RHIDs pending the approval of the Secretary of Commerce. In order to obtain this approval from the Secretary of Commerce, the city must first pass a resolution making certain findings and determinations as to the availability of housing within the city. Staff will then publish the resolution and send the required information to the Secretary of Commerce for approval. This resolution includes six potential RHID properties that were not considered in previous resolutions.
What would be the?
Oh, sorry. The answer.
Resolution number twenty-eight twenty-four dash two thousand nineteen.
May I make a motion that we approve resolution number twenty-eight twenty-four dash two thousand nineteen?
Second? It's been moved and seconded that we approve resolution twenty-eight twenty-four dash two thousand nineteen. Any further discussion? All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay.
The governing body is asked to consider and approve the attached resolution allowing Garden City to participate in the Kansas Moderate Income Housing, or MIH, grant program from the Kansas Housing Resources Corporation. If approved, this would be resolution twenty-eight twenty-five dash two thousand nineteen.
Hi, Mayor and Commissioners.
Hello again.
Hello. The Kansas Moderate Income Housing Program, MIH, allows certain, allows cities incorporated within Kansas with a population of fewer than sixty thousand residents to request grants or loans for infrastructure and/or housing development in rural areas. Grants or loans under this program will be limited to no more than four hundred thousand dollars per awardee. The program is designed to support developers with their cost to provide moderate income housing to the community. The communities must have a need for housing as determined in the most recent Community Housing Assessment Team Study, our trap report of two thousand nineteen, there remains a need for moderate housing in Garden City. Government agencies apply on behalf of the developers. A resolution of support is required by the governing body, giving the city authority to apply for and participate in the program. For our two thousand nineteen program, Garden City has one applicant, GC West LLC. They are the developer of the Columbus Edition. The property is generally located at sixteen oh one West Joe McGraw Street. The developer is asking for four hundred thousand dollars to use for infrastructure improvements and development costs to construct a multifamily dwelling complex. This development will provide two hundred and forty new units in which they will be building a hundred and twenty units that will be priced in the moderate income level. The property is categorized in the comprehensive plan as two or more family residential. The property is Zoned R dash three Multifamily Residential District. This agreement does not vest any rights or privileges to the developer, to develop this property to the developer. The developer has completed the plan review process. The alternatives before you, you may approve the resolution or you may not approve the resolution. Staff recommends alternative one. The governing body approve the resolution. There is no fiscal obligation to the city if the developer is pursuing a grant.
So Melissa, um, do they qualify for any of the other, other opportunities or other incentives, like a TIF to funding, or do they qualify for anything else? If they qualify for this, this is all they can qualify for, for infrastructure, or?
If you recall, the Columbus Edition has already applied to be part of our RHID program, and you approved that already.
Okay, so then they get that also, okay.
So they'll be using the RHID, and then under this federal, this state program, they can also use the MIH funding. TIF grants wouldn't be able to be used.
I'm sorry, I meant RHID.
That's okay.
Yeah, and they're assuming that, I can't keep track of them all.
Yeah, they wouldn't be able to use that at this property, and I, at this time, I don't know if any of the developers pursuing any other state.
So the other thing, like sidewalks, I know that that's guaranteed, that we always have sidewalks, and as far as green space, is that something that's involved in, in their plan, or?
Um, that has already been approved through their site plan review process under the RHID.
I move that we approve our, our resolution number twenty-eight twenty-five dash two thousand nineteen.
I second. Thank you.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve resolution twenty-eight twenty-five dash two thousand nineteen. Any further discussion? They wouldn't qualify for the neighborhood revitalization, would they?
They could qualify for that for the individual units, and we have not been made aware if they'll be pursuing that option or not at this time.
Okay, okay, any other discussion? All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Item twelve A, the governing body is asked to consider the proposal of a city flag. Sophia?
Sophia and I are going to do this one together, since this is her first one.
Sophia and Jennifer?
So as we came before you at the pre-meeting that we had, the meeting before, we talked to you about the process of a city flag. This first came before you when Mr. Blood came and presented his city flag and suggested that Garden City get, get a flag. From there, it, it kind of took its own community spend, spend, and the Makerspace worked on collectively getting people together, holding meetings, talking about flag designs, and coming up with, with a few different options. They did hold two different sessions where people were able to vote on the four flag designs that they had. I believe at the first one, there were only three, and at the second, they had, had all four. During the first event, they were able to collect about two hundred votes, and during the second, they collected approximately thirty. So now the community's out there talking about these four flags and kind of wondering what the City Commission is going to do, and what better way to tell them by to make a vote today and, and decide where you want to go? Do you want a city flag? Do you feel comfortable with the process that the Makerspace did? And do you want to move forward with one of those four flags? Or, as Sophia will talk to you here in just a minute, do you want to go with your own process and go through something that some of the other communities that have adopted a city flag have done? So she's going to talk to you about those communities and, and show you their flags, and then you, you can decide.
Okay, so our first example is the city of Manhattan. They recently adopted a city flag about a month ago, and their entire process took up an entire year. So how they did that is they first gathered community opinion on whether people even wanted a city flag or not, and they found that most people did through their online polls on social media. So from there, they held a request for proposals, and they received a hundred and twenty submissions, maybe it was a hundred and twenty-one, one of the two. So they received their submissions, and they gathered a committee, a small committee, to choose a final five designs, and from there, they gave those designs to the community to vote on. They ended up with three thousand votes, something like that, and this was the flag that they ended up with. And I thought I'd mention, all of their submissions were anonymous, too, so. Now, the second example is the city of Hutchinson. They kind of had a similar process in getting a flag, except their process didn't involve city staff, it was just an outside group of community members. They held a request for, for proposals. They got about fifty designs, and from those designs, they chose five finalist designs, and then that same committee voted on the final flag. So instead of getting community output to choose the winning design, they just kind of took it upon themselves to vote on that design, so. Each of these groups went to their city councils and city commissions, and they were both adopted in as the official city flags. So with these two examples, we just wanted to give you guys some reference on other examples of communities and what they did to get their city flags. So there are three alternatives. The first one is vote on one of the designs proposed by Makerspace, and they're up there. The second option or alternative is to have staff develop our own process in getting a flag, and the third one is to not proceed with a city flag, so. Thank you.
You know, the more I thought about this, is this something that we could take through the capital improvement process program? A lot of times, we have city, community members, didn't, we usually get a survey out, isn't there a survey out right now, going out to the community for capital improvement? And then it goes through that whole committee, and they kind of vote to move the project, you know, give it a rating, and then that helps the commission to decide? Just a thought.
I just know how much staff time, I mean, with the big pool, and I know how much staff time, so that, one thing I thought about the staff time is if you direct staff to do this, and I know Jennifer spent, and also the staff who helped support her, which were many, spent tons of time, but I really appreciated the amount of outreach, and I think it's why we were able to come to a, a good decision. So I'm like, yeah, I mean, if you, I would love to see more community input, and so that's the part of where the RFP is very attractive, you know, as an option, but I'm not so sure, I, you know, the time, I just, I don't want you to spend that much time again, so.
I think you probably do a community RFP where you have a set committee that, at a certain time, they sit down and, in one meeting, kind of sort it out to five, and then, or like, similar to Manhattan, I mean.
That could, yeah.
I'd like to see some other options than those four, personally. And some of the, you know, I'm sure we've got some, some people, well, they're in that business here in town as far as, you know, like A-one sign, that, those type of people that could maybe submit an idea or two.
The only other thing is, I mean, we, for better or worse, we do have a community symbol already. I mean, the point of this is looking and rallying around that community symbol, and the Yucca Burst, I don't know if that's the official name, but that's the name that, that in my mind is what it's called. I mean, the Yucca Burst, I mean, you can see that anywhere, and you instantly know that that's Finy County Garden City. It wouldn't work very well as a flag, because if you count how many collars are in there, we have fifteen collars in that Yucca Burst because of the way they layered when they designed that, so in itself, it doesn't make a good flag, but we do have a identifiable, recognizable city.
Symbol.
Symbol. I mean, you can even tell on the, on the one collar, where we have the one and two collars. collars, you can still see what this is. So part of it is, how much more brand recognition and community pride does a flag give us over just having a recognizable symbol that we already have?
Well, we, we have a flag also, could, but it's more complicated. I mean, I can't remember what it is, but I've seen it. It used to hang on the city building. The seal, I guess.
It was a seal, yeah. That thing was too complicated.
Right, I'm just saying.
Had a little bit of everything, you know.
A little bit. Like the Kansas State.
Yeah, it's.
Mr. Keston wants me to talk. About to kick me, Roy. I like the idea of a flag. I brought it up at our first commission retreat. I think it could be a really good idea. I don't know that it has to be limited to just a flag, as Shannon has said, I think a community symbol, you know, agreed. I don't know that this really needs to be our staff responsibility to do this. I think as a commission, we should support it and support the idea of it, but I would love for this to take on a life of its own, an outside committee, a, um, a conglomeration of businesses and interested parties, and maybe a community competition, and anything else to get people really invested in. Because if people aren't invested in a symbol, then it's not really gonna do the job that we want it to do anyway. And so, uh, you know, when I look at these alternatives, yes, I want a flag. Do I think that it's the city staff, um, place to create this process? I don't. Cause I just still can't figure out in my mind how to direct that process, so.
And I guess that's what I was thinking, where we could go through the C I P, get, get some input through that committee, because it is a large committee, they do rank different projects, and part of the, part of the ranking in that whole process is art, community art, and different things like that, and they could, we could give that to that and run it through that process to give us input on that.
The idea of art goes through that, but not the actual art itself.
Right.
And I would, I would.
There, there's been some areas that.
Well, there's a committee.
I, I mean, that's.
Am I wrong on, where, I mean, there's been suggestions on different types of art, or different, um, iterations of art that they have suggested to be placed in the community, and that's gone through the C I P process. And, and we've done some things towards that, but I'm just thinking, instead of us making the decision like Commissioner Burns has said, we could give it to the C I P, they could run it through that committee and bring it back to us.
Sam?
Hate to put you on the spot, but.
Why don't you comment?
You have room on the C I P survey, Sam?
Come it up.
I know you're a short timer, but.
Um, when it comes to art, we haven't had a lot of art come through the C I P. Uh, we would have to have something in our hands for them to view.
Okay.
So that they can rank it, and I think you have to come up with some designs first.
Well, I think, I think just putting on there, having a city flag or not having a city flag as a symbol, yeah, I mean, rate it one to fo- four or five on, on the scale, that could give us an idea of where the rest of the community stands on this issue. Um, and then when we're going through the budgeting process and everything else, when you give us that, that whole packet worksheet, we could look at that and discuss that at that point of moving forward.
When you.
Since.
Starts in October.
October first.
Oh, November seventh.
Yeah, well, it's later in October, but, yeah, I believe that process starts in October.
I know, it was just an idea of helping us to get more input on this.
But in that case, you're just talking about, should we do this, or should we not do this through the C I P? Not specifically.
Not specifically.
Here's ten different flags.
No, right.
Okay, that makes sense to me.
Yeah, we could do that.
Not specifically, here's, here's ten flags, you choose. No, it's more, is this, is this, you know, one through four?
Yeah.
Do you want a city flag, or?
Yeah.
You know, how do you want this rate? Higher or lower?
Yeah.
And then that could give us a better understanding of how to proceed forward on this. That, that's my, I don't wanna say, well, here's five flags, and you choose, and then bring it back to us. And that's not, no, that is correct.
Okay.
We could do that, yeah.
Right.
If you want the committee to vote on how important a city flag is.
Right. But like, there's been, you know, wanting, um, more artwork, or fountain, water fountains, or those types of things, and I know that's been in the C I P process and has been rated. I think this would be a good avenue for the commission to have, would you like to see a city flag, or you can word it however it needs to be worded, but, and then have it rated, and then we could look at it down the road, and then that could give us an idea of how to proceed forward in budgeting, and if we want to have staff work on this, or go in another direction.
I had a, a citizen ask me about, um, up at Third Street in Kansas, where we have the water feature, uh, putting a American flag there. And I said, well, you know, we're talking about flags, and, and we could put, like, you know, if we had a city flag, a U S flag, and a Kansas flag, something like that there, that's a pretty good spot for that. And I said I'd bring it, bring it up at the appropriate time, so that's something that we can decide later, but, uh, so I think that C I P is a good idea. Let's see where it goes.
So yes or no on the city, like, or the scale?
Well, they could just give a scale.
Give us a.
Bring it back, and then we could look at it to see if this is something we'd like to move forward on, budget, have staff do an R F P on this, or go a different direction with it. But that would give us more input on, on a, giving us an idea of how to proceed with this particular item.
Okay. You got that, Matt?
I do, yeah.
Okay. Good.
The, uh, I think we're ready to move on.
Moving on.
The governing body is asked to consider and approve the low bid for the two thousand nineteen alley tree and vegetation removal project. Andy?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. We have a unique situation before you, but apparently not, um, unprecedented. If we have policy to give a little bit of guidance, um, but, uh, so I'll just go ahead and, and start reading, and, and then we can have a discussion on this. Uh, so we're asked to consider the low bid on that alley tree vegetation project. We received bids on September third of, of this year for a hundred and twenty-five alleys to remove, um, certain trees, dead trees, certain vegetation, in order for trash trucks, utility vehicles to be able to proceed through the alleys and perform the services that they need to serve, um, to serve the community without damaging vehicles and these kinds of things. So this is the second year that we've done this, and the bids came back. We had two that bid, one is Alfred's Tree Service out of Wichita, and they bid forty-six thousand to do all a hundred and twenty-five alleys, and then Pro Cut, which is here locally, bid forty-six thousand, two hundred. And the problem, not the problem, but the situation that that, that brings before you is, under two hundred and fifty thousand dollar projects, if they're within one percent, the governing body may award the bid to the local contractor, if that local contractor is willing to come down to meet that low bid. So let's look at the alternatives. Um, well, we'll go before that. The staff, staff does recommend staying with the original low bidder, cause we, we really have no reason not to disqualify him, and I don't know if we would call it disqualifying, but using policy, but, but, uh, this company is a company that comes in to Garden City. They helped us with the twenty seventeen storm, they've had other contracts within the city, and so just as them coming in as the low bid, that would be our recommendation. But, uh, the alternatives are to award Alfred Alfred's Superior Tree Service the contract to complete tree and vegetation work of a hundred and twenty-five alleys, uh, for a sum of forty-six thousand. Alternative two would be to, uh, award Pro Cut the same contract for forty-six thousand, or alternative three would be to direct us to different alternatives. And we do, we do recommend, at a staff level, alternative one, but the governing body may award that to Pro Cut if you so desire.
Quick question for you, on, when you, when you do that, and clear, go through and clear the vegetate, the vegeta, the vegetation?
Yes.
Uh, do you let the, uh, property owners know that you're, you're doing that?
Yes. We, we deliver flyers to their front doors, and we receive calls. And also part of that process is, we don't let the contractor go down the alley unless a city representative has gone down the alley with that contractor and, and told them what to cut and what not to cut.
Okay.
And so it's, it's a, it's a pretty well-managed product, or project. Sometimes some things slip through the cracks, when you're talking about a hundred and twenty-five alleys, so.
We do, um, we have awarded Pro Cut some other contracts.
Yes, Pro, Pro Cut has had contracts, and, and both of the, both of these contractors do work for us. If, if Troy's available, which he usually does a great job of making himself available for when we need stuff done, and, um, if Alfred's is in town, we need something done, uh, he'll do work for us, too. So, so both of these companies are very reputable companies, and, and I, the Parks Department and I have good relationship with both the owners of these companies, and so we, we're happy with the work that both of them do.
I make the mo, I make the motion that we award Alfred Superior Tree Service the contract to complete the tree and vegetation work on a hundred and twenty-five alleys with a sum of forty-six thousand dollars.
Is there a second? I'll second it. Okay. It's been moved and seconded that we approve the contract forty-six thousand to Alfred's Tree Service for the two thousand nineteen alley tree and vegetation removal project. Any further discussion? All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Three nays? Okay. I'd entertain a different motion.
I'd make a motion to award Pro Cut the contract to complete the tree and vegetation work at the low bid sum to match forty-six thousand. I'd like to support the local business in this instance. It's so close.
I'm sorry.
It's been moved and seconded that we award the contract to Pro Cut for forty-six thousand dollars. Any further discussion? All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Okay. Number three, C.
Item twelve C, the governing body is asked to appoint a representative to the Finney County Childcare and Early Learning Network, Inc., Board of Directors. Earlier this year, Finney County Economic Development Corporation convened childcare and early childhood learning stakeholders with interested major employers and investigating ways to address a shortage of childcare and early learning availability in the community. The product of those conversations has been the establishment of a nonprofit organization named Finney County Childcare and Early Learning Network, Inc. Attached is the new organization's bylaws. The Board of Directors held their first meeting on September tenth. This board includes a position for a city representative because of the city's interest in the community issue, as well as its interest as an employer. The request is that the representative be able to speak to the organization's need, uh, as it relates to offering childcare and learning spots for dependents of employees, as well as the overall need for these services in the community. The governing body's alternatives are to appoint a staff person, to appoint a city commissioner, to appoint someone from the community. You may choose not to appoint a representative to the board, this is not an obligation. While it's in their bylaws, it doesn't obligate you to make that appointment. Uh, we request governing body, uh, direction. If you do choose to appoint a staff person, I would recommend that, uh, that be me, uh, during this initial period. There could come a point in time where we come to you with a recommendation that the most appropriate fit would be somebody different, uh, if you choose to pick a staff person.
Do you feel like, do you feel like we should have representation on, on there? I mean, even though it says it in the bylaws, you?
I do. I think it'd be very good for us to have.
I make.
I was wondering if Commissioner Burns was interested, I know this has been a topic that's been near and dear to your heart, and I know you have a vested interest in.
Yeah, all of those things. I, I'd very much be interested. That being said, I understand that the meetings have been set at a time that I'm already committed for my work schedule to be out of town, so, but, no, I would, I would definitely, and that, and that's why I really support us having a representative of the city on this, on this board.
That's what I was thinking with a, a, a staff person instead of a commissioner, just because commissioners are, due to the nature of elections, it, it makes it a little bit less stable of a, of the appointee than a general staff has, would be.
I think Matt would be a good.
I make the motion that we appoint Matt Allen to be on the F C C E L N board.
I, can we just change that to staff person, so that the motion is the staff, and then they have the ability to then appoint whoever will, who will be Matt, but that way the decision lies with the staff, instead of with, you, you see what I'm saying? If we say specifically Matt, then if Matt wants to step off, step off the board, do we have to then approve a new person, or?
I'm glad.
Yes. So if we make the motion that it's the staff who, then it's, then it would be to their discretion as that goes forward, correct?
Right.
I amend my motion to approve a s, a city staff person to the board.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded that we appoint a staff person from City Garden City to be our representative on the Finney County Childcare and Early Learning Network, also known as C F C C E L N.
So just so I understand, you're investing authority in the city manager to make that decision?
That, that is correct.
Any further discussion?
Does that need to be part of the, okay.
All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
I could see where that is a little unclear, just saying staff member, and anybody could just, I, I understand.
All right, I'll be glad to serve in that role, and, and if, even if we, uh, think a change is necessary down the road, I would expect that I would have a conversation with all of you on what that would be. I think we're ready for item twelve D, which is the consent agenda, and streamlined this agenda quite a bit. If, if approved, it would be approval of item B one.
My, my kind of consent, yeah, I'd like to make a motion to, to approve as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the consent agenda, D one. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Commissioner Burns?
All right. Well, we had an exciting morning with the groundbreaking of the, uh, projects commencing down at the zoo, and so that was a very nice ceremony, is happy to be part of that, uh, got to attend Wild Affair, too, and that was a very nice, um, evening put on by, by the friends. So exciting things happening down at the zoo, go down, take a look, it's a beautiful time of year to go down and, and check things out. Um, unfortunately, I was not able to attend the Southwest Coalition meeting, and so I wanted to ask Matt to give us an update on that, um, and any, any events or, or changes that he wanted to, um, describe for us that came out of that meeting.
Thank you, Commissioner. Um, the, and, uh, probably also let, uh, Commissioner Dick weigh in, uh, as well as Commissioner Enru, Jennifer, if there's anything for her, uh, from her point of view. So the three entities, City of Dodge City, City of Liberal, and City of Garden City, ga, gathered for their annual meeting. Uh, there is no action taken in these meetings, the action that's taken is taken by each board separately, but we did have our discussion around our legislative policy. And so the Southwest Kansas Coalition Legislative Policy appears to, by and large, uh, uh, look a lot like it did last year or in years past, really, uh, around topics of, uh, immigration and natural legislation services available in Southwest Kansas, uh, advocating for, um, higher education in the region, um, advocating for transportation improvements, continued investment in that, and this is a little bit of a milestone year i- in that regard, uh, because of the role of the Transportation, uh, Task Force last fall, moving into the Secretary of Transportation starting another listening tour, with the hopes of putting before the legislature in the twenty twenty session, a, a new comprehensive transportation plan. Uh, so those were, th- those were the major points of discussion. Uh, we believe the draft S K C policy will be ready for the October first, uh, city commission meeting. Um, around that same time, uh, the first part of October, uh, the City of Dodge City City Commission would consider it, and the City of Liberal City Commission would consider it. These are separate and apart from our own legislative policies, which cover a lot broader topics. Uh, but this, these are around, uh, some tightly, tightly patterned topics or even positions, and if all three governing bodies pass. And if all three governing bodies pass it, it becomes, uh, the policy of the Southwest Kansas Coalition. So, yeah, that's my takeaway from the meeting and I'll turn it over to the rest of you.
The only thing I would add is that we are going to do a bifurcated trip instead of doing two DC trips in the spring. We're going to do one in the fall and one in the spring so that the legislatures have more time to work on our issues and to digest them between the times because they get really close when someone goes in February and then in March. Um, and our Pinnegar and Smith are working on those dates and probably right now looking towards mid to the end of November. Okay.
And I think more of also this idea of really having something specifically for the federal, that visit, and then also for the state visit. And I think it was interesting that there was a lot of discussion around specific asks rather than some general statements, um, like the higher education, so really supporting, you know, the, um, new educational opportunity in Dodge City and also being very specific about our transportation needs and really focusing on certain corridors, even though they don't, aren't specifically in our region or area maybe as it, as it connects to us. So I thought that was a really good discussion that we'd never had before, being more specific about our asks. There were a couple of, I was really impressed with our, um, Pinnegar and, I can't remember that.
Smith.
And Smith, I, they really impressed with their legislative update, was really well done. And so I think that would be something, if we could share that, I, you know, I mean, they did offer notes, but it was really well done. I think they do a good job for us and, and I think that they really work well for Western Kansas, so.
It was good to get together and reaffirm the commonalities that we have between the cities and, and learn the specific issues that, that the different cities have. And like I said, it's, it was more of an iteration process with specific asks this time. But overall, I thought it was a productive meeting and, and went very well.
Good, thank you all.
Commissioner Sesna?
Uh, you know, it was great to see the zoo projects moving forward and, uh, seeing that, along with, kind of gives everybody a little hope that, you know, something is taking place. Like Matt mentioned, that it, it did pass in 2017 and now we're starting to see, uh, the fruition of the, that sales tax starting to take effect and we'll see zoo projects and, as well as hopefully in the future, we'll see the other projects starting to come to fruition as well. Carol Davidson starts next week in the planning department, so welcoming her back. Um, you know, it's great to see the hundred-year history and higher education in our community celebrated. Um, it's great to have a community college in our, in our community. Uh, wanted to mention fall cleanup's coming up, um, September 30th through October 11th, so, um, just want to let everybody know that, um, that's a great opportunity to kind of, um, spruce up the community as a whole. It's something that we do here in Garden City that other communities don't, don't do and I hope, um, our citizens take advantage of that. And then great to see Jennifer honored and another good, uh, good employee and being honored with the, it is a, it is a high honor and it's a, it's a very big award, so congratulations to her on that. And then, um, wanted to mention it, but I missed it, um, another good, um, month in the sales tax receipts in the community, so. All in all, great, great to be in Garden City.
That's all God. Commissioner Dick?
I think the raise for the mayor should just go to, just having to be the last one in all these because I think we hit most of the topics already here. And I'm, I'm just fourth. Um, I would like to say, uh, Community Mexican Fiesta went really well, Commissioner Burns and Anru, uh, we were in the parade, the Fiesta itself, uh, was really well attended.
And their kids.
And, and our kids.
Mine are too big, didn't have to say that.
Yeah, so that was really good. And then, um, also on, uh, Sunday was a homecoming parade for the high school and that was also really enjoyable. Um, I believe almost all of the elementary schools, I mean, I, I believe almost all of them were participating in the parade, so it was really good to see a lot of kids out, a lot of families out. The rally in the park went really well, it was really enjoyable. Like to commend the, the planning department with their work with the builders, that I know it was a lot of effort to go and get those, all the ordinances and all that stuff worked out with them where we could come to a, a resolution that, that worked for everybody in the city. I know that they very much approved and, and, and liked that process and were grateful to be included in that process, um, and, and know that the city's on the side of the builders as well as we go. And then finally, just talking about the great importance and, um, the, the great joy we should have about the Garden City Community College and 100 years in a community is a very, very special thing. Um, and I encourage everybody to take advantages of the celebrations that are going to be going on here really soon, to show them how important, um, they are. I know there's a lot of us that got degrees through there, um, that, that might not have even got off the, off the ground without the opportunities that we have locally. Thank you.
Commissioner Anru?
So, um, this week I got a meet with Melinda, uh, had the chance to meet with her and just again checking on the budget and I'm really excited about where we're at as a city and that our fiscal rating, our fiscal responsibility makes a big difference in how we sell bonds and the projects we do. So I just want to commend the staff for keeping us fiscally sound, um, and really doing a great job, you know, making sure that we have those great bond rates because there's some big purchases coming up, so I'm excited about that. It seems like, uh, the Assistant City Manager Jennifer and I, and I can't remember who else was on that, uh, we sat, it seems like years ago, down to, you know, pit contractors and today was kind of the combination of, you know, digging the dirt and seeing that happen and so, um, I'm really excited about that happening. I do want to commend Jennifer on her award and, and hopefully as she carries it around, Jake will honor her in a manner that's befitting. So I would really play this one, yeah, I would really play this one out if I were you, yeah. I thought he was actually going to make a speech when he got up.
I tried to convince him to.
Uh, the Mexican Fiesta was wonderful, um, the food, I had the most incredible breakfast papuza. I, it was, but then the lines got incredibly long too. But the turnout was tremendous and we were able to talk about the city and welcome everyone there. And so it is, it was a really fun day, the whole, it's really great seeing Garden City alive in downtown and it was just, you know, standing room only, so it was really nice. Um, charity classic went off without a hitch, I didn't want to, I want to fail to mention that. I know the city staff, the golf course and, I mean, the Convention and Visitors Bureau and I know a lot of city staff. Jennifer was for one, put a lot of time and effort in that and that makes a huge difference in how our, in how care happens. Um, finally, the Garden City Community College, it is a wonderful facility, it's a wonderful institution and 100 years, that's a, a great accomplishment. So I'm excited about the upcoming, the gala and all of the different things that are happening there. And so, as Commissioner Burns always says, if you are aboard in Garden City, you are not figuring, there's tons to do, there's lots of really fun things coming up the next three months. Um, and I hope you have a weekend, I hope you, you know, if you try to slice a weekend free, but there are some really neat opportunities, so that's it.
Didn't leave me with much.
When you're done, there, I'd like to add one thing.
Okay, okay. Jennifer, thank you, uh, for participating in, in, in your award of the ICMA. Uh, the groundbreaking, I thought, went over well, there was a lot of people there. And, uh, that's phase one of our four-phase, uh, projects. Also, I'd like to thank Sam Curran for filling in as building, chief building inspector. Uh, you know, that, uh, and, and also doing other work. So, Melissa?
I'll do the job.
We appreciate all your work in that department, there's a lot going on. I'd like to thank Commissioner Anru for filling in for me. Uh, I was out of town for the, reading the proclamation. You got through that, all right? Good.
I, I shortened it a little bit.
Did you?
I didn't want to do the one like you did today, so I shortened it a lot, so.
But I appreciate you filling in for me on that and if I owe you anything, let me know.
He accepts payment in return.
All right, I think that's all, go ahead.
Yeah, whoa, hey.
I'll move over here.
County Administrator Randy Partington let me know of some dates that they already have scheduled to get around in the community and talk about the bro, the bridge road maintenance program, sales tax reauthorization. As you all well know, a portion of that sales tax, a considerable portion of that sales tax comes to the city of Garden City. We have used that and can show using that for not just road maintenance, but for matches to, uh, road capital projects, uh, or just road capital projects in general and, uh, other transportation improvements for other, uh, transportation modes. So, uh, the, that sales tax is, is important not just to the county, but to the city of Garden City as well. In that regard, some assistance in, in going around with them, uh, staff will certainly, be there, but if there could be some elected official representation at these meetings, that would be good as well. We'll send you some follow-up information on these dates, but I just thought for your benefit and maybe the benefit of those listening, uh, you might like, uh, to know some of those that are already scheduled. Thursday, September 19th at 5:00 PM.
Where, where are?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, you probably want to know where that is?
Yeah.
At Senior, at the Senior Center for dinner? Tuesday, October 1st at 12:15 PM at the Senior Center for lunch. Wednesday, October 16th at noon with the Board of Realtors. And this is a, a time slot that Commissioner Sesna had, had, uh, allowed the county to, to share, uh, with him. We appreciate that.
Where does the board meet?
Here, I think.
No, 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 no.
They don't? Oh, Board of Realtors, no, I'm thinking of.
We'll get the, we'll get the location out to you.
Do you know?
I don't.
Different places.
Yeah.
What was the date again?
The 16th of October.
16th of October.
16th of October, I don't know what that is.
We'll get you the address for it.
Wednesday, October 30th noon for Rotary and I believe that's it, Clarion, Clarion.
Clarion. Yeah.
Those, those the ones that have been scheduled thus far?
Okay. Anything else? Not, we stand adjourned, it's 2:42.